Good afternoon, everybody. And let's begin with a moment of reflection and silence, please. Thank you very, very much, and we'll officially call this meeting to order as it sleeps outside. And welcome all of you and I hope you have a Merry Christmas as we begin this meeting tonight. And number three on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, is my right? Our pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Remind everybody that paperwork for this meeting is at the back of the room. Help yourself on the table back there. And item number four on the agenda is consideration of approval and is there a motion of any kind?
Yes, sir, I'd like to make a motion to add to number seven, a seven A, which will have Chip Hemingway and his presentation on what he's done so far is developing a plan for the pier, sir.
Anything else? All in favor of approving an amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All who say no, it's unanimously approved. So we're now on number five. Consideration of minutes for October 10, November 8, November 15, and November 29. Motions of any kind?
Motion to approve all four sets of minutes.
All second.
All in favor say aye. All who say no, it's unanimously approved. Number six, public comments, I have two people that have signed up. Mr. James Baer. We've seen you before, sir, you have the floor, speaking of the microphone.
James Ba- James Bauer, 329 Ocean Boulevard West. I'd like to address seven and nineteen of this, of the minutes. While we're getting involved with what to do with the property that the city owns and while we're talking about Block Q, I would like to remind the council and the membership here that at certain times, the water supply system for this island is not up to snuff, especially during an emergency events. I would like to think that with Block Q, there could be made a place where we could have static water supplies. You know, you've seen them everywhere on every farm, you know, just large polypropylene tanks. They look like a silo, maybe ten to twenty thousand gallons at each one, one at Block Q to service the east side of the island, one on at seven, I can't remember the name of the address, the one by the pump station. And what we could do is we could have static water there. So in case there was an emergency, especially in case there was any kind of problems with the emergency pumps, that we would have additional water at very little cost, that would be added on to the supply lines. Once again, at very little cost, that might save a couple of houses here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Smith?
Good evening, Keith Smith, 105 Durham. I wanted to address seven, what is seven, seven A. The pier plans, I was looking over some of the drawings and what I would like to see or to see if we could incorporate into that. Again, I'm reflecting on my childhood as I've said a thousand times here before. But what me and my wife are discussing and what we didn't see, we saw a place for adults to go, have a beverage, get something to eat. But we didn't see anything maybe for a teenager, like maybe some pool tables, a game room, something of that nature so that we addressed the entire family. Because, you know, I have teenagers, I have future teenagers. And so my moments growing up around the pool tables, I was at Fort Fisher, but around the pool house or the pier house, there were just some special times because it was just a lot for us to do right there. It was safe, it was controlled, we're on an island, if not, then the kids are always going to be wanting to get off the island. And obviously, you know, we don't want amusement park, I'm not saying anything like that. But something that they could do to occupy at their time, they'll be safe and fun and friends could do it together. So, that's it.
Thank you very much. Number seven. Mr. Hewitt?
Yes, sir, we've got Randy Baker from Pinnacle Architecture here today to run the draft master site plan for Block Q by the board and share it with the public. Mr. Baker has joined us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hewitt, Randy Baker, Pinnacle Architecture. Hope you guys are doing well. The little sketch from Google Earth that you're seeing there is the proposed parking lot for Block Q. The parking lot that you see maximizes the area of that site. You can see we closed off the road going adjacent through that, I think it's Carolina Avenue, I believe that's what it is. That one is closed off and we've got boat parking and public parking, regular car parking around the perimeter. With that, we've also got a toilet facility, toilet house if you would, bath house, and a little small area there for, you know, maybe a dog park, little area there in the left, bottom left-hand corner. This parking, like I said, maximizes the lot. We do need to get some soil borings in that location and to find out what kind of soil. It's all sand, of course, but to see if there's anything there to move forward. And also, the drainage, you can see those areas that we've got in green. Those will be little detention areas and plantar areas. But like I said, you know, this is just a first little sketch of, you know, of the lot. I'd love some feedback. The area, it's a two-way drive going through there in between the boat parking lots or parking areas. It's about thirty-five feet wide. Boat areas, when you try to pull around, you know, you need some area, large areas to get around. I would love to open it up for questions, comments, feedback. That's what we're here tonight for.
Randy, let me go before the board, and this is on an administrative coordination with you. And I don't know, some of you may have seen public works out there today. We're doing utility locates out there for you. There's Phil Norris has coordinated that, so they're over there. Now, we're not, we haven't broached the subject of any core borers to see what type of soils there are, but there was some digging going on because there's some, we want to make sure that we have utilities located, correct?
Yes, perfect, thank you, thank you. And I think Mr. Norris is also with the topo at that area, trying to run down that. But other than that, I do have a couple of aerial drone pictures there for anyone, if you'd like to see those. There's a, we've got a couple of drone pictures, I know everybody knows the site that we're talking about. But this is one drawn picture looking back at the ramp area and the bridge. And then the other one is a reversed picture of that portion of it, and you can see Carolina Drive there. So, if you go back to the first picture of the parking lot, any feedback, comments? There was some comment about some green area, and that is certainly fine. Just we're trying to maximize, that was our goal, to maximize the site for parking.
We had, I had envisioned, this is of course due to the size of it and what it's going to cost for the restroom facilities and the other things we have to have to develop this area. We were, I was thinking, as I discussed with a couple of the commissioners quite at a time, that we maybe use on the north side, have the boats where they can pull in right off of South Shore Drive and pull into that area, and then an area wide enough where they could pull back out, back on to, on the road and go back to the ramp. That would be something that we could start with now and have ready hopefully by maybe the start of the season. As, and maybe have, I'd like to see a lot more green area. At this point in time, we just don't need that many parking places, and a green area would be great. If we ever see the need or find the need or given direction that we need more, that green space could be transformed back into parking.
Right.
But basically, I think I spoke to you before the meeting, the area off of South Shore Drive, had the boats pull in, be able to pull out the end and go back around. Parking around the bathroom itself, I think that is important. But as far as this area back in here, allow that to be a green area possibly with some parking on the right-of-way, parking around it as we have now. So, you know, that we wouldn't be adding sixty some parking places for cars. It'd be what we've got now around the edge of Brunswick Avenue and Quentin Street. And then we'll have a way for the boats to pull in and pull back out. Having them in this area here, I mean, it's, it's, again, we, I think we could get twenty along South Shore Drive or somewhere close to that. A lot of these guys with the big boats, you know, they're thirty-foot long, add five more for the tongue of the trailer and then a duly picked-up truck that's another twenty-five feet long. We need a pretty lengthy area. And if you've ever sat at our boat ramp and watched people try to back their boats in, I think parking where they can pull in and pull out will keep people from getting their property damaged.
With that said, how many parking spaces are you guys looking for in the beginning? There mentioned twenty, basically, boat parking.
Well, I didn't draw it to scale, I didn't have my scale.
I'm with you.
But I guessed it, and I got, I got just about twenty along South Shore.
Yeah, a good idea, I mean, if that is the board's direction, we're fine with that.
I can't speak for the rest of them.
That's the same things I had. The only other thing I was concerned with was could we add over there in the bathrooms with the two handicap spots? Would it be possible to add more handicap spots there just because we're having issues with handicap to provide more?
We can add as many as we need.
And then like-
Those meet code.
Okay.
But-
But I think we probably use some extra. The right-of-way on the outside rim, I think is a good idea, and I agree with him to keep some green. The only other concern I had, that entryway onto Quentin, we have to keep in mind those are houses over there and lights for boats and stuff. So I don't know if we could utilize an entryway on Jordan or Brunswick so that lights are not be directed at residences, homes on Quentin.
Okay.
Well, I, that, I understand, and that we could just reverse the flow and have them come in here where their lights would be pointing toward the restaurant and stuff and then pull straight out and go to the ramp. So, you know, either way, I mean, it would work, but that's something that I think possibly we could agree to get started on.
I know we all agree on having the boats all on the north, okay? We all agree on that. And I agree with, we don't have to turn this into parking for cars immediately. But even with a green space underneath that has to be the ultimate plan for what if you needed as much parking as possible. And then we can overlay the green space where we're saying right now we don't need it. Okay, so even if it's, we don't need it right now, we want green space, it's still got to be there in a master plan and we'll just suppress some of it.
Right, I'm with you.
I like the twenty-one spaces on the south side.
Mr. Evans?
I commend you for the handicap parking, but I think it would might be advantageous to have access to the parking area for pedestrians that may be coming from the pier or the pavilion to be able to access the bathroom by some means other than having to approach it with a car and into a parking place. Like an open access, I see no open access other than a driveway access for possibly a pedestrian.
Actually, if you'll see, there is a sidewalk going around connecting back to the main road. You see the sidewalk going around, we'd have to have that ramped up. If you'll look at the north end, there's a sidewalk going around where that parking, handicap parking is, there's a sidewalk that connects that road there. So there is a sidewalk going-
So you've got, you're letting them access-
Off of Jordan?
Off of, no, off of Jordan or off of Brunswick Avenue?
It's right there, right where the curve bridge, what is that road, right there, coming off the boat ramp. Jordan, there you go, yeah. Yeah, we've got to have sidewalks around there for the handicap parking and all that, so.
I don't see it.
I don't see that.
You don't see that tan, right there, exactly.
It looks like there's grass there, he's talking about having access all the way to this road, like-
Interconnectivity.
Yeah.
That's, absolutely.
Yeah, what I'm saying is that the only access is from a parking spot.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
That's, that's-
We would like to have outside access to the handicap restrooms from the public facilities that are adjacent to the property.
Absolutely. Fair enough, we would, we would anyway, so.
I was, when I was thinking about handicap parking, I was also thinking, we don't have to cluster all of the handicap parking by the restrooms. We could have handicap parking where it's convenient in the section of car parking closest to the beach for people who are coming to the beach aren't necessarily wanting to focus on the restroom. I know the easiest thing would be to cluster all of the handicap parking by the restrooms, but remember handicap parking is also people going to the beach, and I don't want to tie up all of the restroom spaces, what I call restroom spaces, with people who are coming to the beach for several hours, and that is, that is where it's focused. Just, again, these things are, they'll evolve as we design, but you know, that front row of twenty-one, I was looking at it saying that's going to be closest to the beach out of all of the parking in here. And maybe there's a couple places there for handicap parking.
With that, and right now, I do not think the town has a sidewalk from there going to that area. So getting wheelchairs through a roadway might be, might be a little challenging, but it can, I mean, it can happen. So I totally agree with you, but I think there needs to be some type of handicap access across those roadways in Markville. So if we do something. Good, thank you.
Randy, I was just getting one more question.
Yes.
I was trying to rough scale these things, are those boat parking spaces sixty foot?
Right, at sixty-four feet, that's correct.
Sixty?
Sixty-four feet.
Sixty-four.
That's correct, yep. Good deal. Any other questions, comments? What we can do is revise this plan, and I might give a couple of other options, taking from what I hear tonight, a couple more options of this. I would like to find out how many toilet fixtures are required. You know, depending on if we're doing for the bandstand or is it just a couple of fixtures? If we go with the bandstand, you know, within assembly, that's one thing that I need to talk to the inspection department about, and how many toilets that you guys would like to sit. So, other than that, right now, I think our building is forty feet long, about twenty feet wide, something like that. So, but if it needs to be larger, smaller, something like that. It'll have to be up, raised off the ground, flood plain level. So there will be ramps going up to that level, but other than that, that's pretty good. Any other thoughts, questions, comments?
Do the commissioners mind the questions from the audience? Yes, sir, Jim?
Service permeability?
Yes. This, depending on what type of surface, we've done geo papers before that will, you know, that will actually, you know, be purpose in those areas. But what we've got shown is asphalt.
Yes, ma'am.
Would this be paid parking or free parking?
It's paid parking.
Paid parking.
This is paid parking, we have paid parking there now.
It would have to be officially recognized, yeah.
Can we get the names of the audience?
First person, Jim Bauer, first, and ma'am, your name?
Savannah.
You got that, Madam Clark?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else from the audience?
Keith Smith.
Keith?
Keith Smith, do you know what the elevation of that flood plain area right there is? How high would it be?
Uh, right in that area, it could be close to six feet, twelve feet, something like that.
All I must say is if that floods-
We got a problem.
Are y'all talking about where the bathrooms are at?
Right.
I would estimate that to be somewhere near the baseline elevation at grade right now, or possibly higher. Yeah, but grade, grade is, you don't mind grade, yeah.
You thinking like two or three feet up, right?
I'm probably wrong, but I don't even think it's that much.
Me too. I don't think it's high at all.
I was thinking it'd be a slab.
Maybe? We got a deer feet up. It'd be two foot up.
Any more questions from the commissioners or the audience? Jim?
If you do hit with that ball, I'm just saying one has got to go somewhere, and that enormous cave there, that's going to be someone-
Oh, it is, and those green areas, it's just like I was talking to our civil engineer, we've got to find out drainage areas, ponds, you know, to clean the water, that type of stuff, you're exactly right.
Mr. Clemens?
There's actually a gate in the basement of Brunswick Avenue that ties into a pipe that goes right through the water.
We may have, right, we may have to treat that water before it goes through, if it does.
Yeah, we'll quietly figure that out, if you get my hand.
But you did say you've used geo papers before.
That is correct.
So what's the, what's the, what's the odds that we've got enough green area now to capture?
From speaking with Phil, I mean, depending on what we've got, it looks like we've got, if you'll look at those islands and stuff, he said we've probably got enough in that location.
Yeah, we could do some onsite containment.
Exactly, yep, yep.
Any more questions from anyone in the room?
Do you have a calling card with you or?
I've got one now.
I'd like to have one before you leave this evening.
Sounds great. Thank you, guys, Merry Christmas to you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Rick, you got something on seven A?
Yes, sir, I'd like, again, Chip Hemingway with BH BMH Architects is here to discuss what he has come up with as a first, first look at possibilities for the pier property, sir.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to come and show you where I am as far as. Okay, thank you. Just let you know where, what I've done so far relative to our scope of work and where I'm headed. And get feedback on whether I'm in the right direction or if something might change or ideas that might come up and just general discussion about where we are so far. So, we received the survey, I know, I think you asked me how long it's going to take to get it, and I said two months after we received the survey. Of course, when I said that, I was thinking it was going to take us three or four months to get the survey, like it does on most projects, and we got it like the next day. So, I'm, I've sped it up in our, in our office and still waiting for my structural engineer to get down here to make his kind of walkthrough evaluation of the pier structure and the building. He is scheduled to come down here next week. And so I'll be getting some feedback from him on that. But this is the survey of the existing site. And we have come down, we measured the existing building, which we'll be showing ultimately, and all those walls in there and equipment inside the building will be part of the demolition plan.
Hey, Chip, do we have a day certain when the structural guy is going to be here?
I don't know exactly when he's coming.
The earlier you can let us know what that is, the better for access and stuff like that.
Right, especially during the holiday. Yeah, okay, I'll try to get with him tomorrow and tell him. And of course, we drew up, measured and drew the elevations as well, which will be modified in the near future. And I just wanted to, you know, kind of, a couple photos of the existing facility just to refresh anyone's mind. Some of y'all have learned and grown up going to that facility, so you don't need a refresher on it. But, you know, the entrance, I'm going to get into what we're thinking at this point on the entrance. The interior, of course, will be gutted, those walls and that ductwork will not, will no longer be there. Those fish will be stored or may be hanging in the future. This is the current pier entrance, the building entrance from the pier. And of course, it's needs, in need of some TLC, and we'll talk a little bit about what we'll do there. Here's the current ramp that we've talked about in past meetings that does not meet ADA slope or requirements for handicap access to pier structure, which it will need to. And then, one of those pylons, I think it might be the second pylon from the right, looks like this. It's about half, you know, only half of it's left, so it's riding out, we'll probably need to replace that one. However, this is the worst one I've saw, first one to walk up to. And then you've got all kinds of things like this out on the pier that our structural engineer will address. And all the bolts look like this, you can't tell the head from the nut. And, you know, and a lot of the timbers that are bracing the structure have split right at the bolt. Basically, you know, not functioning in the way they need to in a structural capacity, which we'll be addressing in the scope of work of the structural engineer, or, you know, rehab of the pier. And what I plan to do is kind of tell you what I see as a rehab of the pier. And y'all can tell me if that sounds good or disagree or whatever. But I would imagine all the bolts will be replaced. A certain percentage of these cross braces will be replaced. But, all in all, the pier, to me, looks, is in good condition. I think, once it, once it has a certain structure that goes from here to that second ramp, which is right out here, and from here to here, there's a certain type of structure, and then it changes when it gets here and goes out here. And where it changes and goes from here to here, it looks to be, I mean, let's see, where's that? that? Go back there. Straight as an arrow, you know, there's very little movement's happening in that pier structure from what I can tell, except for one area that has dipped down, and that's just the settling of one pile. And so replacing those bolts, repairing any kind of cross bracing that might need to be replaced, seems like a very manageable scope of work to get this pier structurally stable or more so. It's already survived a lot. And you can see that little dip that I'm talking about right here in this photograph on the left-hand side, you know, worst-case scenario, it may remain, but we would like to try to fix that. And, uh, so the handrails, you know, they don't meet ADA requirements now, um, and we talked about in a couple walkthroughs of the pier, that some of the handrail structure is insufficient. It's, it's not safe, and it could become safe by re-bolting it, or it could be that those, uh, four-by-sixes that support the handrail or guardrail, whatever you wanna call it, uh, need to be replaced. And then all the horizontal members on, on the handrail would need to be replaced and re-space to have a little less space in between them to meet handicap accessibility codes. And then the top rail. So, you know, I've discussed with my engineer, like, we might just go through and replace all the handrails, or we might just replace only the vertical supports that need it, and then we replace all the horizontal members. But either one of those scenarios gives you kind of basically a, a brand-new look from the handrail. And the pier decking seems like it could go quite a bit longer to me. And here's a good picture of it. You can see it's got a little bit of age on it, but it's still in pretty good shape. You know, you might have 10 more years or longer with that decking. And then here's another picture of the decking. It's kind of sustained with some of the wildlife that's occupied the pier at this point. And also, you know, the benches, at the very least, we replaced the top, but it could be that you want a more substantial bench. I, I kind of, you know, I like that bench in that you got a place to sit, but you can't get too comfortable. And, uh, so, and also, they're not very wide, so they don't take up a lot of the space for people to walk back and forth on the pier. And, uh, I, I took the picture out of the light posts, but, you know, it could be those light posts are good and we just replace the light fixture. I don't know, the, the light, I don't know, the lights may or may not work, but I, I would assume you would want to replace them with something that's a little more domed or hooded than the current light. But that, those are details to come in really the next scope of work. And, uh, so what we've tried to figure out is, you know, this is a master plan of the site, and we know that part of the scope of work is the hatteras ramp for emergency vehicles that we show on the bottom of the site on that drawing, and then a ADA walkway for the beachgoers to enter the beach strand from the parking area. Also, we show on this, and I'll show it a little larger in another drawing, is the darker brown is what would be a new wood structure. All that would have new pilings, new joists, new decking, new handrail. And so what we're proposing is when you come out of the pier house and walk up to this first ramp, which has that small, wide an area up there, it would be a new structure instead of trying to rehab. And that's part of that where that rotten timber, rotten post was, I showed in the beginning. Um, and then, uh... That, that would be it as far as new, and then we just rehab the rest of the pier all the way down the length in the, in the manner in which I just described. So inside the pier house, and this is a blown-up drawing of that, and I know we've talked about that the slab needs to be replaced or repaired in a manner of overpouring and then pouring new concrete slab on what is currently the wood floor structure. And so in that process, I was thinking it would be a good idea to cut some of the existing slab out in this area and that area and set, set the doors back so you would have a little bit of overhang protection from the weather before you enter the building, particularly on the ocean side. There's no way to, and also, it's needed on the ocean side because of the way the ramp works out and trying to get up to where the pier is flat. And so we kind of need to back up a little bit to get our ramp that close to have our runs meet ADA slope. And, uh, so the big difference would be that when you come out of the pier house, you would be, you would have seven steps to go up. Now, of course, you, you're doing both steps. You have the ADA ramp that gets you around, and then you'd have a landing, another ramp, a landing, and another ramp, all figured out to meet the slope and the runs of handicap ADA accessibility code. And so that's the new part of the pier that, you know, easily constructed from land and, and then in the pier house, what we talked about is, you know, of course, the mechanical equipment and electrical equipment will all be replaced. And this is just a sample concept of what I came up with based on our discussion in the pier house some few weeks ago, was maybe there would be two businesses. One would be a tackle shop and t-shirts and actually charge people to walk out on the pier. And on the other side, where there's currently a restaurant, maybe there'd be a new restaurant. And this restaurant would, or not restaurant, excuse me, pier concessions. It would, you know, sell whatever the, uh, the leaseholder would wanna sell. And, uh, and I'm just showing this as a sample layout, but, but the most important thing that I think we've talked about putting is the public beach restrooms, which I have, let me back up a little bit, which I have put on the same side as the handicap access and the emergency vehicle access in the pier. And, uh... I know the comment earlier was there are no cool tables and that kind of thing, and I'm not, I don't, I'm not sure if this building, existing building is big enough to accommodate that, but we've tried to, we just imagined it might, okay, and this is, gets to what I was maybe getting some direction from you. We're gonna show the public restrooms in there, and we're gonna show restrooms in there for concessions slash restaurant building and, and employee restroom in the, what would be a tackle or t-shirt shop or whatever it might be. And that could be all we do, you know, and then you let whoever leases that part of it do the rest. However, you could suggest what the leasee might do by go ahead and then put a kitchen in or breaking it up into certain things, um, you know. Any thoughts you have on that? We're open to that at this point, and we can show it any way you want to. This, I just kind of came up with something that might work well, and as far as like, and I was thinking of families coming to the beach and thereof, and so at the top left of this building, we were thinking maybe there'd be an ice cream type of facility, coffee shop that people or families can get their ice cream, coffee, or they're going back and forth to the beach area. On this side would be concessions, hot dogs, hamburgers, fried shrimp, whatever it is that person is selling there, and accommodate some outdoor seating. Now, we suggested that there would be outdoor seating outside the building, but I think you're gonna be limited to the amount of debt to put out there because the building is over the camel line the way I look at it. And, um, was, I kind of need to go back, sorry about the misstep. The line that's, uh... Right here is the current camel line. It runs right through the building. Way out. Board of that, that...
I'm trying to do it.
That's the 75-foot line you're looking at. The actual camera, the actual camera where the toe of that frontal dune is, where you can hook over, have a structure forward that is actually behind the building. I think it's that front of this line. Okay, and I'm just looking at this on the survey, says it's the 60-foot setback. Well, that's the 60-foot, the actual camel line, I, I don't know, we mark it, but it's out here where the toes are, the toes that do it. I don't know if it's marked out there. The camel line, well, is that the building? Yes, that's the building. Yeah, so the camel line should be running somewhere right in the...
That's it, Tim, that's it.
Okay, well, it's not labeled on the drawing, and I thought that's what we had kind of talked about, that it was forward, but when I look at this note on the drawing, the 60-foot setback, small structure setback line runs through the building. Very simple, right? The actual camel line is this line right here. Okay.
It's showing its toe to frontal dune.
That's the toe of frontal dune. Okay, all right. That's where you're gonna be limited because you're, you've got a 75-foot line, and then you've got that 60-foot line, you've got a 75-foot line you got turned in, and then you have a 60-foot line in the area of the normal return, and then you have that camel line. That 60-foot line runs through the building. All right, so you could have more outdoor seating than I have, and, and then the restaurant or concessions building could take up any shape, but it suggested that put the kitchen on the parking lot side, kind of a no-brainer, um, that I should've done first of all, but, you know, I, I make sort of just getting the, the, uh, the restrooms in there, and then the rest can be whatever it is. And, uh, and then we have drawn and measured the pier, and here it is in the blown-up version that my structural engineer will then take and do his kind of evaluations, be able to make notes on it. And with that, that's, that's kind of the work that we've done so far in terms of drawings. And I'm ready to open for suggestions and discussion about any part of it.
Commissioners, got any questions?
Yeah, um, when I look at, I had been hoping that the 50-foot lot that was bought for accesses, which is both the emergency and the ADA ramp out to the beach, that there was gonna be some room there to actually have parking that would be dedicated to handicap parking. But unless you can push that emergency road all the way over to the edge of the property and then even then still have to finagle some with the ADA ramp because you've got it coming off some, uh, outdoor seating, I don't see that there's gonna be any place for, for any cars to park in there.
Okay.
And, and that was just, I mean, I, that was just something I had been hoping we would have. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but, and I, I can see why you've got the emergency road the way it is because you're coming straight shot in from the road and you've got the parking already existing up against the property line, but...
Okay.
Does it make more sense to move the emergency road all the way over to the edge?
Well, I'm glad you said that because the one thing I haven't really worked, worked on is parking lot. And, you know, it seems very efficiently laid out based on the width of it and the length of it. However, you might be able to get some more parking up there, and, uh... So that's a very good point.
And, and then you actually have on the east side of the restaurant, you have some outdoor seating designated, and, um, I'm just thinking that, that that's gonna sort of inhibit people from cutting right from the parking lot to that existing access on the beach. We're gonna kind of have a little walkway or something?
Okay, uh, yeah, so I base, I laid that out using the more conservative line as the camel line, and so I'm glad to get that straightened out as well and, um, that we could have more seating towards the beach as opposed to off to the side. You, you can see where I kind of jutted it right along where I thought was the camel line here. And, you know, yes, I think that beach access should remain just almost the way it is now.
And with the two outdoor showers where people rinse their feet?
Right, yeah, yeah. Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
And, and you, you, so you'd have two, you have access on both sides of the pier, which is, would be great.
Yeah.
I also noticed that where you have the four campsites...
Right.
Again, there seems to be a, a pretty good space between the last campsite and your, the seating area.
Yeah, so I...
Was, was there a purpose for having that much open space?
Uh, well, I was kind of not, I, I was stopping it with those existing power stuff, so it could certainly come on over, you know, if you wanted to have campers that close to the restaurant. I don't know, it doesn't, it, it, I, you know, I supped y'all.
We're gonna, um, probably eventually lose the only oceanfront campground that Holden Beach has. And there is a big space there.
Yeah.
If we could get a couple more in there.
Okay.
And, and make them, you know, nice and wide enough so they can accommodate their vehicles and...
Right. Yeah, my civil engineer's probably done some camper spots. I just kind of Googled and found out. I, I, I'm doing a campground right now, but I haven't sized campers. And, and...
Yeah, I mean, we may get one more in and...
And those may be too si, too big. We can, we can look at it a little more closely as we go along, but, uh...
What's there, what's there that really don't have room to park their tow vehicle beside their camper?
Oh, yeah. I don't know if they have it here either, but they might be able to park it in the front. The one, the one thing I changed, I thought would be a good idea, if you stacked them like that, each one would be oceanfront, you know, which, I don't know, it's a rip rent of, I don't know if you have staggered rent for the oceanfront. And so I'll, I'll see if I can, I can get one or two more in there, and, uh, also I need to just clarify the truck, the tow thing with.
Yeah, 'cause you might end up using the extra space for them to park their vehicles.
Right, and, and you will lose a little bit of public parking from them because of that.
In turn, and you may be able to have them unhook their camper and then park their four or five vehicles and run it to some other spot.
Yeah.
That's better, but...
Right.
Just thinking out loud.
Okay.
If we're gonna keep them there.
I have a question. The outside bathrooms?
Yes.
The access, I don't know if there's anything that can be done, but the access is on the opposite side of our campground, so it looks like it's gonna be much harder for our campers to access outside, whereas the other private campground is gonna be much easier for them to access that.
I agree. Uh, now, and, uh, I, I was thinking that the bathrooms would naturally be where they are now, where the porta-johns are, but what that does to that space on that side of the pier house is it makes it quite significantly smaller. And so it just seems, even though it doesn't seem ideal for some people, for the interior spaces, and again, this easily, I'm just moving right over.
Well, and when we're advertising for rent, the campsites on the opposite side, the bathrooms for our building are closer to those campsites than they are to our campground.
I agree.
I don't see that campground being there much longer. I would, I would tell them that we're gonna have, probably have only five or six campsites on the oceanfront in North Carolina.
Yeah, well...
Most of the motorhomes and campers now are definitely self-contained.
Yeah, I would think that they would have them in, in their showers every night.
Yeah.
So, when I first started looking at this, I was like, well, we, we should have the beach, it should just be the beach access right in the middle. It's in the middle of the parking and it best serves. But I know that with the hatteras ramp, there is a requirement for ADA wooden walkway to go across as well. Is that correct?
Well, with the grant that went in, I, I think that you probably need to speak to both Tim and I about the stipulations in the grant and then how this is drawn on the side, 'cause there was some specifications that went in... Well, with the grant that went in, I, I think that you probably need to speak to both Tim and I about the stipulations in the grant, and then how this is drawn on the site, 'cause there were some specifications that went in that this might not be showing everything we need.
Okay, do you know them right offhand, or?
Yep, part of them are is that we exceed the ADA requirement, which is gonna require a longer distance for that ramp to begin and end.
Uh-huh.
So, and you're gonna be limited to where it stops, depending on where it begins, so, uh, it, it goes back to the handicap parking places, that part of it was also the easy access for the handicap, and the, the, uh, the fact that we were exceeding those ADA requirements.
Okay.
Which means that there is dedicated handicap parking at the end, at the beginning of it, and the beginning of it goes further back into the parking area.
Okay, and so, uh, and when you say exceeds the re, you're saying it needs to be one in twenty?
Yeah, we, yeah, uh, I actually expected it one in twenty.
Okay, alright.
But we also, but like I said, we also expect it with the, uh, access for handicap spots at the beginning of it, so...
Okay.
They're either gotta be in the front of the building, right directly there in front, somewhere near it.
Yeah.
And it's got to start somewhere near that parking lot.
Right.
You know, or it's gotta come out starting in that area.
So, I, I guess, you know, I gotta plot the, the dune there and, and make sure we get over it, and you, I don't know, shave a little bit of the dune, maybe it sits in the dune a little bit, of course, you know, you know, depending on, on what it can, how it can fit.
I'd like to look over and say shave the dune.
Hey, uh, Chip, but once you get a little bit further along and, and talk some more with, um, the staff there.
Yeah.
Um, perhaps we shouldn't miss the opportunity to also consult with the fire chief, since this is an emergency vehicle access.
Right.
And, and I know that what we think of as emergency vehicle is a four-wheel-drive truck, but...
Yeah.
There's some other, other things that may be unique to the fire department that may impact how that, how that, you know, plays out.
Okay, sure, yeah.
And we can get, we can, we can bring, uh, Chief Todd to the table, so just, just let us know.
Well, yeah, I, did I do that?
No.
It's me, sorry.
Uh, you know, based on the comments that I've gotten, you know... You know, shortening this hatteras ramp that goes over the dune right here, it could start up here at this setback line, the ramp continues near where I have it, and creates some handicap parking spaces there, and, and maybe there you can come over here, and there's a paved sidewalk going over to the ADA ramp, something like that. So, that is very helpful information for me to get this design moved further along than where it is right now, um...
Tim, does the, does the hatteras ramp go over the dune or through?
Hatteras ramp don't go over the dune.
Yeah.
Up, over, so a truck can pull over it.
So, the reason I was talking about that is that the, the ADA ramp, eh, the way I understood it, would needed to be adjacent to the hatteras ramp.
That's true, but it's that lot that has been approved on, we have to give a parcel of the lot, and we have to give a, a description of the project, and that's what we just grabbed.
Yeah, so, that, that was, you know, okay, I was, then I was like, okay, well, now we have, we just have two accesses, one on either side of the pier, works great, however, you know, it's been tugging at me to get rid of this beach access when I was trying to widen outdoor seating, so, all that is gonna be, go away and become beautiful. A beautiful experience, right, I mean, place is gonna be, uh, you know, I've been saying it's gonna be on fire with activity, and y'all know that better than I do, but, uh, uh, you know, first started this, I thought we were gonna build a new pier house, new pier and a new pier house, but now that I've gotten fully kind of involved in this thing, I think what you're gonna end up with is something really good for the community, what you got. And so now, kind of, one of the things, and I, I'll keep going till y'all, everybody falls over, but so y'all just tell me if there's enough, when, when to stop, um, you know, to talk about inside of the building, what, how much do you see us installing, or designing, or trying to repair it, or lead tenants in a certain direction, or should I just not even worry about that? Just put some bathrooms in there and, uh, leave it open, you know, I think you wanna put, we wanna go, we need to go ahead and put new windows in, and, and, and the idea of being garage doors at a concessions facility, awesome, I like that.
I think you would have to prepare for the kitchen.
Yeah, right, got the cooking floor drains in and all that, and, and at some point, we're gonna arrive at fifty percent of the price value, I don't know what that number is, send them out.
Can't, can't give you that number until you give me the actual numbers, and then I'll, I'll give you those things that were identified as safety issues and trouble problems by the town prior to sale.
Right, okay, so, so one, that's, we've talked about not being in the fifty percent is the floor slab, new floor slab, the HVA system, and the new electrical system, and so we're gonna, we're gonna put as many bathrooms and as many windows as, as we can, and kind of beef up the structure of the building just through sheathing, no new structural members, but just getting the sheathing in the exterior of it and try to get it insulated. And then how much we go beyond that is gonna be based on how much, where we are within that fifty percent of price value, or whatever, how it will come up with those. Um, and then, what I was thinking, in the next year, if we can get bathrooms near the end, that's when you address the roof, or if in between now and that next year, the roof becomes a safety issue, and you just gotta repair it outside of it.
May I suggest those kind of discussions, let's not do that here, let's...
Right, okay, yeah, yeah, alright, okay, well, that's where I am, and just, uh, you know, I'm feeling good about where it's headed, and, and, uh, hopefully all...
Any more questions from the commissioners?
Are you feeling like the due diligence documents have pretty much captured whatever was going on with both pier and the building then?
Uh, yeah, I, I haven't really invested a lot of time in the document for the pier, and I'll let my structural engineer do that, and of course, we're trying to create that same document in our head as, uh, as design professionals. Um, so we're, we're looking at the things we think need to be replaced, and...
Well, I can tell you bulks and cross bracing were two things that were definitely in the due diligence, so when you said that, I was like, this is nothing new.
Right. Yeah, yeah, right, and so that's the way we see it, and we're gonna leave as much as we can and repair, only what absolutely needs to be repaired, get the thing back in order, and also to look good, we want it to look good.
Alright, any more commissioners' questions?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Certainly.
We look forward to continuing to work with you.
Okay, yeah, so on my next visit, I, I should have wrapped up this phase of work, maybe we can move into getting the thing actually inside.
Alright.
And, and I promised John to leave here, David.
That's good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That's a good Christmas present.
Yeah, and I have some handouts here, the old school style, if anybody, I'm just leaving here, up here, you want one?
Alright, very good.
Need to get the fire going.
Alright.
Thank you, Chip.
Number eight on the agenda, elects the mayor pro temp, town clerk.
Per section thirty point zero five, the mayor pro temp, um, shall be elected from its members, the normal term starts in Jan, or I'm sorry, December, if you guys would like to change the mayor pro temp, you can do so by voting out loud or on the ballots, or you can choose to keep the...
Is there a motion of any kind?
Motion to reappoint Rick Smith as mayor pro temp?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, unanimously approved, congratulations, your pay, your pay is the same.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Number nine, meeting schedule, Clark.
Okay, this is actually two parts, my part is the proposed normal regular meeting schedule before the board, all the dates except for the March date reflect the third Tuesday of the month, we pushed the March date, or we actually moved it ahead to the second one because of conflicts, so if the board is okay with that, we would need you to approve that. And then, um, second part is Commissioner Murdock asked that you guys bring your calendars so that you can see if you wanted to schedule quarterly meetings, special meetings, so my part would be what's in the packet, if you guys would like to approve that.
And so, post-COVID, we are continuing five P M.
Correct, unless the board chooses not to.
I'm good with it. Motion to approve the twenty twenty-three Board of Commissioners meeting schedule as presented in the packet?
Yes.
Any further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? unanimously approved. Number ten, Madam Clark.
Oop, I didn't, did you guys wanna talk about quarterly meetings?
Yeah, you want me to speak to this, Heather?
Uh, I'm sorry.
Yep, sorry.
Um, with as many things that we have, um, in progress and going on with the pier and, and block Q and stormwater and all RFQs and RFPs that we have going out, um, this past year, we've had a little bit of trouble getting everybody together, so I had asked if we could set aside four more days, um, one every quarter, to hold meetings about whatever we need to hold meetings about, um, like specifically wanting to talk about block Q, or the pier, or anything else you guys feel like that we need to meet and talk about where we have some time, um, that was, that was my reason, and we could go ahead and set that schedule, if we use them, we use them, if we don't, if everybody agrees that we don't need to meet, then we won't meet, at least two of which are gonna roll into budget meetings, um, so we could, two of those could be set as budget a, as well as talking about these other things, so I feel like it would be easier if we could do it and go ahead and set those, those dates, two of them we're gonna have to have anyway for sure, um, for, for budget purposes, and, and we could talk about the other things too. I think if we meet more, we can accomplish things faster and push things along a little bit quicker than once every thirty days, and that's my, that's just my thinking.
Brian, my only suggestion, and I don't know if the others feel the same, if we could have, uh, the quarterly meetings maybe two days after the regular scheduled meeting, that way we don't tie up two or three weeks with, uh, maybe if we can get it all done in one week, like we have the, the regular scheduled meetings on the two, third Tuesday, and then make it, uh, the, the third Thursday to where we could, we could do that, don't wanna tie up a Friday or a weekend, but one would be Tuesday and a regular meeting, and then, now, that's just the four extra meetings, that way it's all in the same week, I think it would be...
Right, and if...
Helpful to everybody.
If at a regular meeting, we decide we don't need to do it, then we won't do it, but at least we would all have halfway planned to have one, I think we're gonna need them, um, we've called probably five or six in the past year, you know, anyway, off the cuff, and I, I just, I feel like four is a reasonable number, and I, for one, wanna see these projects that we have pushed along a little bit as fast as we can possibly reasonably do it, decisions made properly, so we can get some things accomplished around here as just as fast as we can, namely like block Q and, you know, these guys wanna park their boats this summer, man, that's five months, five months away, um, so if we can get it done, you know, by all means, we, we need to try to get, even if we have to phase it to do it, or, or whatever, we, if we can come up with some way to, to move anything along faster, it would, I think it would help. I mean, I'm a builder, and I'll just throw out like, um, if you're building Seaside, for instance, right, and you, you, they don't like something that you propose, you have to wait thirty days before you can even meet with them again to ask them if you like your next proposal, so it, it really stifles getting anything done, and it's, um, it's just the way they operate, but I think we could operate more efficiently if we had just, if we set aside a few more meetings. I'm not asking for one a month, I'm, we may have to call more than, than these four, but, um, I'm just asking if we could just push in four.
Well, I mean, I had actually, I agreed, I thought March, June, September, December was a quarterly, assuming that at the beginning of the year, we're sort of organizing, I'll just call it the overall project plan, um, and then, and then again, March, June, September, December is quarterly, and March and June may be dates, as you said, that could also accommodate some of what we need during budget.
And David, you might wanna say, it may not be, you know, those months, you may say it might be better to have a budget meeting in May or whatever, so we could adjust to prepare for that as well, you know, to kill two birds with one stone on that day.
How about if I do this, how about if I bring up, and I don't know if this is, it'd be too late in January to do it, is to bring a proposed budget schedule to you, and then figure out what the quarterly meetings are with an eye on having those, I mean, March is probably a good start for the initial budget, uh, June is probably a good end for the adoption of the budget, but we need to have some in-between budget workshops in-between that aren't gonna satisfy the quarterly thing.
I, I would appreciate a few days before we nail this down, because those obviously have other board meetings and stuff, give an opportunity to look at the big picture instead of... If that makes sense for me, it does, and the third, the third week of every month, um, I've got town stuff and college stuff and a couple of other organizations I meet, where that's a tough week, I guess a question would be, uh, are these gonna be afternoon after-work days, or are they gonna, is there any time in year-end days in consideration?
I don't care, but Heather seems to think it's five-thirty's charm or something, but...
Well, I'm just thinking about staff too, I mean...
I, I would love it if we could have it during the work day instead of at night, but we do have people who, it's ver, I mean, we have working people, we have a working commissioner who has a full schedule.
A bunch of them.
A bunch of them.
And I understand if one of you guys can't make it, but I, if, if four of us could get here, we, we can move some stuff forward, so...
Can we look at January?
Can we do a January day, we're just, you suggest your budget meeting day, or?
Yeah, I can come up with a budget schedule at the January meeting.
And we'll kind of play off of that.
I mean, that, that would...
Is that alright, everybody, just January? Alright. Number ten, town clerk.
Oops, sorry, the Cape Town Council of Governments is requesting that the Board of Commissioners adopt a COG delegate and alternate, currently the delegate is Mayor Holden, and the alternate is Mayor Pro Tem Smith, um, that's been the practice for selecting it in the past, so if the board agrees, we can just continue with the mayor and the mayor pro temp as the delegate to the board, to the COG.
Do we need to make a motion on that, or just say?
Consent this motion, whatever you guys...
Need to make a motion and vote, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second, anybody?
I'll say it.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Number eleven, Police Chief Dixon, we're glad to see you out and about and feeling well.
Yeah, I'm glad to be back in the real world again. So, December, I don't really have much to talk about except the weather, so, because of the weather that's approaching the weekend, we've been trying to get in contact with the DOT to see what their plans were for salting the bridge or anything like that, because of the rain we've got coming in, uh, so we... So we're, we're working on that, trying to get in touch with them to get that ball rolling before the weather gets here. But with that, I want to give a public service announcement that we're gonna have some bad weather this weekend, freezing weather starting, I think, Friday. And it's supposed to run through like Tuesday or Wednesday of next week. So drive careful. If you don't have to get out, don't drive at all. Remember, the bridge freezes before the road. So we will try to keep it open and stay in touch with the DOT as much as we can. But there is a chance that it could be closed due to icy conditions. So just want to throw that out there. Other than that, if you have questions, comments, or concerns, I'll be tried to, glad to try to answer them. But I don't, don't have much to talk about in December, which is a good thing. I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Right.
Perfect. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Evans. Inspections.
I think that was a challenge. See how quick I can make this. Here's my report. We were very busy. As you see in the report, we're still averaging somewhere between 23 and 24 inspections a day. We are actually running about even with previous years other than the last of the COVID years. We are seeing a transition like we normally do when the economy starts to transition. We see where we start going from a higher number of new starts to a higher number of major renovations. That is a trend. For all the years I've ever been doing this and back when I was a contractor, it was a trend that we noticed back then. For the most part, between 2004 and 2006, we had a big boom and then everything fell apart. Holden Beach held steady in those years and they held steady in the years when everybody else had fallen off drastically. But they have, but Holden Beach has constantly picked up since those, since that beginning year of 2010. Most significantly is the number of, the number of permits that we have that are active that we constantly monitor and work. And if you look at the sheet, you can see those. Those active permits of 319 are what we constantly monitor and work on on a daily basis. You can see that we have 30,000 new, new major, what we consider major renovations. We've got 13 of those. We have 19 that are sitting in the barrel of the gun that are waiting to be picked up. And we have a total of 381. We've got seven that are in review. We've got 12 that are incomplete. And those are the ones that'll come back them up now where they didn't provide us all the stuff and tell you that we've been holding them up. The zoning permits issued are 14. The CAMA permits that are issued are six. And we've got two CAMA violations at this time. One of them was a dune breach on, in a major dune breach in Dunes Gate where we had someone who cut the tops and we, just basically cut through several dunes. They are, they've been issued their citation and they have contacted the contractor who has put the dunes back to our satisfaction, but now they have to be planted with new vegetation. And that's what, our duties are vast and we do cover a lot. We did have 409 inspections that were done during this period. And the permits that we serviced over that were over 100 for last month. And those are the ones we had to touch for inspection. And that is the report.
Any questions from the commissioners? Thanks, sir.
Thanks, Peter.
You got number 13, I'll say.
Alright. As directed by the Board of Commissioners in no betterment meeting, staff is prepared to draft amendment to the Town Code of Ordinance, Section 94.03, the Frontal Dune Policies Regulations based on information provided by the Planning and Zoning Board. If the board agrees with the information that's suggested, motion is approved. Ordinance 22-28, ordinance amending Holden Beach Code of Ordinance, Section 94.03 of the Frontal Dune Policy and Regulations. The, this was basically, ended up being a housekeeping event for 94.03, but it does assist us and help us with, with enforcement of that section.
One question that has to do with 6.6, where there is no change.
There is a change there. It didn't get highlighted. It went from no structure other than the four-foot wide to one.
Okay. But I'm looking at the sentence about, because this, this dates back a bit. Structures other than the four-foot walkway that exist when this section is adopted may remain in place temporarily. However, all such structures must be removed no later than December 31st, 2003.
I got here in 2010 and I think every one of them was still there.
I was gonna say, what are we gonna, this, this has been there since 2003.
What we've been doing, I mean, are you asking me how we're handling those?
How we're handling it, yeah.
Here's how we handle it. Whenever someone comes in and applies for a new permit, if they have a non-conformance, then they have to remove it. If they come in for repair that requires a permit, before we issue the permit, they have to remove that section. So we basically bring it into compliance once they change it. It's a policy that has been used by numerous municipalities. My best example would be when Carolina Shores and Calabash were together. They had, wrote a new sign ordinance that made just about every sign non-conforming. And so it had some of the same language, but it turned out that the, that they ended up being, only making them change those signs and come into compliance whenever they tried to make a change to the sign.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's been in there, but.
It's slow.
Well, it, it's not really slow as it is that it would, I don't know why it wasn't enforced or letters sent out or done at large scope. But when I got here by 2010, you gotta remember, they're already, what, six, six years or five years past their deadline. So I, I wasn't sure what the policy was. So I set a policy that when we find one, you know, if they're working on it and then they have to change it. They get to keep it as long as they don't mess with it.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Ordinance 22-28, amending the Holden Beach Code of Ordinance, ordinances in Section 94.03, Frontal Dunes Policies and Regulations.
In discussion, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no, unanimously approved. Mr. Evans, you have number 14, beach map plan.
Okay, this is, this, I don't know how to, how to categorize this. We were actually, put together a beach map plan. We went, we were in the process of putting together a beach map plan and we ran into some issues between the, trying to, trying to get it done between regulation and policy, things that weren't in place, things that were gonna be in place. So what I did was, I did everything that I would need in order to make a plan. And then I thought what I would do is, because we were asked to give an update, what I thought I would do is give the update and let y'all see where we stand with all this and how, how it filters into other things we got going on. And I, as a matter of fact, depending on what you do here, it could affect 94.03, which you just approved to change. So that's what I'm saying, it's just a lot. So I'll try to go through this and, and do it for you. But basically, we got, we got to talk about our existing public walkways. We have 26 of them. They're labeled and they're marked with addresses and the access. The existing areas for beach mats that we have identified, where we have a, a good area would be the East End, which is PW1 because there's a dry sand area and high watermark, depending on the CRC approval, to where we could actually have those mats. We've got Quentin Street, P180 because of the dry sand area and the minimal high watermark, depending on CRC approval. We could actually have one there or have an extension there. And that one's already existing. We could have that as soon as we could get a variance and we'll talk about that. The pier, the pier, as you know, is contingent upon the handicap ramp that would be built there. We may have enough dry sand area to put some there, but we gotta talk about the high watermark and what it does to the mats while they're out there. Areas identified for future handicap access. We, we think there's four areas on the beach where we can have the beach mats for handicap boats. And one's at the 800 block. Unfortunately, the 800 block is, we do have an access there, but years ago, because of safety reasons, we removed the walkway that was there. But the, the topography of that property lends itself to us putting one back. And so there could be a handicap ramp put there and there's enough dry sand beach there that we could put what could be one of our lower maintenance beach mat areas there.
How wide is that space?
I did, I had a slide, but I didn't get it in here in time. But that space is wide enough because we had it there before, for a full access for, you know, like a, like for trucks and for safe, emergency vehicles and to have the, the ramp to the right. If we do a minimum ramp. So we would have an area, well, big enough area. Avenue E, which is on the East End, would require a public walkway to also be put in there, which is at PW1. We got plenty of dry sand down there. Pier project ramp, once again, that's another area. So we've identified that as part of the plan. And then we have, there's a bunch and we, and I'm gonna talk about these. Since I got here, we've had a bunch of these ramps that me and Chris, we would go out ever so often and we identify whether they're safe or not. And as we've been having them built back, we've been trying to bring them as far as we could into ADA compliance. But because of the topography and the vegetation, we, we can't quite make them into ramps. But we've got a whole bunch of them that are ready. So when, as the vegetation grows and we keep doing planting or depending on whether we get more easement or whatever, because that's what they are, we just have to go straight out. They, they could be looked at and we could maintain and monitor them to see if maybe there's one of those out of all the ones that we've done the improvements on. And because we've done them, as we've identified them, I would have to go out there and look at each one and make sure that we're not picking one that's not a handicap, that's not been predetermined to be. And then, of course, we've got the conditions we gotta contend with for existing in future areas. The vegetation is the big thing. Just because it's got planted, it doesn't mean that it's established. And so we have to, we have to abide by those rules. We also have a required ordinance change, which would come about 94.03, that might help us. We've got to consider conditions, the title conditions. I'll give you an example. We put these mats out there, we picked the wrong places and Chris is gonna, Chris's crew is gonna have a constant maintenance problem. He's gonna be out there all day long moving these mats in and out with the tide. They're not gonna stay. So they, they could be an issue if we don't pick the right places. But there's gonna be a wildlife study required. So far, we don't know what the policy is, what the range of that study is gonna be and what they're gonna require. What we do know is, is CAMA's told us that it will be through them. So we are waiting on more information on that. And because of the way the rules are written now, there's a lot of people that have put mats on the beach or other towns have put mats on the beach and then they have to apply for a variance. They apply for a hardship variance through the handicap process. Probably not an issue to get a variance, but just because they got one don't mean we are. It's how variances work. But, but you have to make the, first thing you have to do is actually make an application. I hope that Holden Beach is not gonna be somewhere where we put them out there and wait for our citation while we're trying to enforce CAMA and then we'll apply for variance. I hope we follow the process where we make application, get denied, and then we apply for the variance. So you gotta think that's a process that you're gonna have to go through. And then, of course, the beach mats, they got, they got to be the Lambert of the static vegetation line and seasonal removing, removable during off-season. Right now, that's the rule, is that you can have them out there to where that last line of natural stable vegetation is, but then they have to be removed for seasonal. Employee responsibility, I talked about some of that with Chris. Physical uncontrollable conditions. We're gonna have to do some departmental policy changes. There'll have to be some designated responsibility and, of course, a beach maintenance and placement and removal. And then again, we, I did run some numbers, I ran some numbers for the four locations for beach mats. And I put those numbers in there and I ran, used my, my head to swag some, some numbers for what we would need for engineering, survey, and construction of those two. Not the one at the pier because we know that that's been approved, but for the one at the 800 block and the one at PW1. We have one at Quentin. So for, for an easy fix, we could put Quentin out to where the last line of natural stable vegetation is and have one of, have one that extends out there. Once we get out to that, unless there's a policy change at the CRC, we will be limited to there without a variance. So, and of course, we're limited with all of them without a variance or a policy change or actually a rule change at the CRC. So that's where we're at. We could, it would be very easy for us to draw up a plan, but, but we don't have, we don't, we don't have the budget. But we do know where we can put them and we know what we would have to do to get them. So that's my update.
Any questions?
When are we expecting CRC to make a determination? Since the last two meetings, they've kind of been implying that they were gonna make a determination.
We got, I got an email from them that talked about April 1st with the new thing to be on there. And then there was gonna be a discussion about it, I think. I actually had it, I don't know what it did.
Scoop in the public hearing at the January meeting.
That's right.
I'm, I'm sorry, the February meeting.
February meeting, but there was a, there was a rule change recommendation. And we don't know how that's gonna, but I, I actually got that in here, so.
Any more questions? Alright, thank you, sir. Mr. Clemmons. Pump Station 2.
Good evening. Brain Engineering is prepared to revise the contract for sewer lift station number 2 with engineering services that need to be approved by the board before we can proceed with the request for bids. Page, your following page actually has the fee schedule or the pay schedule outlined. And it's actually an increase of $18,500. $6,500 of that's minor design changes in the plan. And there's additional $2,000 for the bid and pay. It totals up to be $18,500. It also had supervision pay, so it was additional $10,000. This is basically, you know, we had this contract in place two years ago and we sort of, let's say, bailed out midship. We bid it out, it come in so hot that we couldn't proceed further. We'd actually need to make these changes before we can move forward. And some of the design changes we're talking about, I know in the past, Pat had asked me a question. I told her I didn't really need any major changes. That was just some minor changes, giving us another three-foot of buffer before the breakaway walls went in, which I think is a good thing. And it was actually elevating that hatch there another three feet. Other than that, pretty much the same thing it was before.
My experience on other boards and so forth, every bid that's out there is coming in considerably higher than what is expected and it's only gonna continue.
Oh, I am worried the market is plugged with projects, but yeah.
Then I still, I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised contracts for lift station number 2 and to allow the town staff to proceed with the bid request.
Alright, just a second.
Second.
Discussion, anybody? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
Mr. Mayor, got a follow-up comment if you'd like?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to point out to the board, I know at the, the last meeting, I believe that the impression was that we're going out for bids pronto, quick, like. Since the community, the federal money on the community awards is so intricately involved with this project and that federal budget, we're expecting it to be approved this Friday, the 23rd, we're gonna have to make sure that one, that it's. going to have to make sure that, one, that it does get approved, it's $2.7 million. So we're going to have to make sure that it's a timing issue of when we, we, we don't want to go out for bids the end of the week, not have the money in place, because those bids are probably going to only be good for 30 to 45 days. So there's going to have to be a meshing of, of those revenues coming in with how we, how we go out and procure those bids. So I just want to point that out to the board. And the next question is, is, I don't know if it's going to be, the federal budget's going to be passed. But just want to make you aware of it. And we'll, we'll coordinate with Mr. Green on that.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Mr. McCrane, Money Man.
Yes, I've got two amendments here. The first one is to realize the money received for insurance from the public works truck that was flooded during Hurricane Ian, and approving this amendment will allow the town to move forward with acquiring or replacement vehicles.
All right. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 22-29, amending ordinance 22-14 to revise the appropriations ordinance for 2223.
All right. Motion is second from the judge. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. You're still up, Mr. McCrane. Seventeen.
The other amendment is to encumber funds to the pier renovation and repair line for minor repairs that took, took place after Hurricane Ian, and also for any upcoming minor repairs prior to full renovation.
I got, I just, I just saw something here. We've got, the text in Daniel's memo is correct, the budget ordinance actually reads utilities, insurance, that, that's, that's, that's not correct. We want to, we want to move that to the pier renovation and repair line. I think that we just transposed it. So the intent is to move it to the pier renovation and repair line, not utilities and insurance.
Commissioners understand that?
Yes.
All right. So we're back to the motion. We do have a motion. Did we get a motion?
No.
No. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
All right. Judge made the motion to do that? Second. Ryan, second.
That's correct.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Unanimous. And that it? Any questions of Mr. McCrane? All right, thank you very much. Merry Christmas to you.
Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Number eighteen, Ms. Pat.
Yeah. Because Chief Dixon gave a presentation to my homeowners' meeting, and we were, there was discussion about firearms and hunting and things, went and, we went back and we looked at what the current discharge of firearms prohibited exceptions is, and in talking to the chief, he said, well, I've, I've not really ever considered this in detail, but some of what's said in there has never in my entire time ever happened, and I could certainly see that there could be an improved, updated version of this that will be clearer and timely for how things operate today. The chief is willing to bring his suggested modification to 130 dash, or .01 at the January meeting, if the board agrees that considering a more modernized version would be useful. And the part that's particularly modernized has to do with getting permission of the chief of police to go out and destroy rodents, pigeons, squirrels, similar animals considered to be a menace. So that seems to the chief to be something that's never happened and probably isn't necessary to be in the ordinance. So if the board agrees, the chief is willing to come next month with a proposed change of the ordinance.
Can we get a consensus on that? Or do you want to vote and discuss it? All right.
So are you saying to remove that part?
No, it'll be modified.
Okay.
Just updated. Consider that a directive, chief. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Can I make one comment?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I noticed when we spoke about you.
We spoke previously, and I mentioned January, and now that I've looked at the January schedule, or the meeting schedule that was in the back of this month, I will actually not be at the January meeting. If that's an issue, February would work better.
February's fine. It's, it's just to get it done.
That's fine.
We waited for years.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's been in here forever, so.
That's right.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you and your department, sir. And number nineteen, Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir. I just, this is an issue that we've been talking about. We had the owner next door to the property of 796 come and discuss his displeasure with the condition of a town-owned structure. We had talked about doing some stuff, I've been talking with the town manager today. We, and note that he sent out to us last week, there has been an architect that has come out and take a look, look at it, and spent quite a bit of time out there trying to work on a plan that what we can probably do in the future. But I don't see that happening anytime really, really soon, but something needs to be done relatively soon, I think. I don't believe a town-owned structure needs to be in that condition and looked at poorly. I would, I would like to see if my fellow commissioners would possibly agree to direct the town manager to solicit bids for the painting of the outside of 796 Ocean Boulevard West, and to solicit bids for the repair of the AC platforms and steps, remove the antenna from the side of the house, or make the, make the steps unusable where we don't have any liability there with somebody trying to go up and then they fall through. Also discuss the possibility of requesting bids from the local realtors for, for possibly providing a, some weekly rental activity in that facility to help offset the cost of these repairs. So in other words, if we were able to get that done, the, the cost of repairing the steps and the platform for the air conditioners could be recouped during the summer, and then hopefully by then we can get something in the budget, and some plans put together for the future use of that building.
Is that a motion? Can you reduce that to some less verbiage?
Yes, sir, I can. I'd like to make a motion that we, to do, to take care of some cosmetic outfits to 796, and possibly explore renting the property on a weekly basis during the summer.
Just a second. Second. Discussion, anybody?
I got a couple of questions. Don't, y'all don't laugh at me. What color?
I think the same color David would be good.
What color?
You're thinking purple and yellow.
I just, I just want to make sure there's a consensus.
It'd be my experience, to keep it the same color would be cheaper.
It would be cheaper than trying to paint it the second color. I know purple and gold is the favorite.
No, I wasn't going there. It's an inside joke. It's an inside joke.
It's the same colors as Western Carolina.
Are there, are there, are there any other specs relating to, to the, the paint, like the type of paint, that kind of thing, that need to be aware of?
I don't think so.
Make it prudent.
And the, the follow-on to that, you're just talking about the back deck steps, not the ones to the front step.
Back steps, the ones that, I tried to go up, but I saw the door wide open, and they were a little iffy. And I think you just told me you've had those removed.
Yeah, we cut them off.
And we could replace those to get it to where it could be rented, sir.
And then, when do you want this back for the January discussion, January meeting discussion?
Yes, sir.
Both, both sets. If we were to entertain the possibility of short-term rentals or whatever, it would all need to be safe. So it may not, it may not be just the back steps.
The problems seem, seem to be pretty easy to get up and down. They got railing.
Yeah, I mean, I know, but.
Yes, sir. Have them inspected. Thank you, Mike.
Are we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Unanimous. I believe you're still up, Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir. This is information that I've gathered from Holden Beach residents, and some of my fellow commissioners have also, due to the fact that I was putting this on the agenda, have requested a discussion and possible direction for, for David to review the information that we've given him, and for the Holden Beach citizens, on the first year of paid parking, and return staff directions to the board of commissioners for the January meeting. That way, we can, whatever changes that, that they see that are things that are on this 10 bullet point list, if they find those that are, that are not doable or permissible, they can come back and make changes and adjustments to it. But I think what we've come up with is a pretty good list of things, discussed possible changes, the way we handle boat trailers with no tags, that seems to be an issue. Discuss the 24-hour limit on some of the authorized, approved, paid, right-of-way parking. Discuss the possibility of having free parking for the two festivals, and in the area, just in the area of any permitted event. Discuss giving each homeowner, not just the empty lot owners, one free yearly pass and apply, and apply, they have to apply for those before April 1st of each year. Again, that means a person that owns eight or 10 houses, each property will be allowed one if it has a home on it. Discuss, and as far as that goes, for the, the free parking pass for each homeowner, it can only be at the request of the auto connect group, that can only be changed once a year. In other words, if they sell their car, get a new car, or want to change it, they can do that one time during that kind of, that parking year. Discuss making more detailed breakdown of the first year's revenue and the weekly passes, daily parking, ticketed revenue and the percent of collections. That would be good to have those given to us so we can assess our, our success and see where maybe some issues lie. Also increasing the fees to $4 per hour, and then the, the increase for the, for the day, week, and yearly passes. Discuss probably chan, possibility of changing the parking dates, make, from the 1st of April to November the 30th. Also discuss having our parking contractor install the signage necessary to reduce, to review, reduce the confusion. That seemed to have a lot of ill will with the people that were trying to park. The no park, like for instance, no parking signs on the march streets and the side streets, all areas where parking is not allowed. It's, you know, they said, well, this is where you can park, it's marked, but you know, where can you not park? And I think if we allow the contractor to install a proper signage, I think we'll come out way ahead. We might need to get some of our town staff to assist him in a street-by-street assessment to re, to review any changes in the, in the parking areas and sign placement. And the possibility of eliminating all unauthorized right-of-way parking. So as far as a motion, to put it in smaller, smaller stuff, is just to have the town manager get with staff and discuss the issues, and the suggestions that we have for parking for next year, and have them ready for us in the January meeting.
Is a motion? All right. Is it a second?
Second.
All right, discussion.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Can, can someone elaborate? Because I, I cannot be the only one that doesn't understand eliminating all unauthorized right-of-way parking. That seemed like a double negative to me. If you've got unauthorized right-of-way parking, I'm going to need some explanation in order to understand that.
I think he means.
Do you know what it means?
I, I think he means discuss eliminating all undesignated area of right-of-way parking, which at the moment, we do have approved right-of-way parking outside of designated areas after paid parking ends in the parking season, and for the rest of the year, outside of the parking season, right-of-way parking is allowed. So I think you meant discuss eliminating all right-of-way parking except in designated parking areas. Full stop.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Wheel number 21, town clerk.
We have received the updated fees assessed by Green for Life for people who utilize the voluntary curbside recycling program. The 2023 cost for people participating in the program would go up to $106.88. It's an increase from the current rate of $86.37. We need to update our fee schedule if the board would like to move forward, so the recommended motion would be to approve Resolution 2209, Resolution amending the Holden Beach fee schedule, if you wish to continue with the curbside recycling program.
Motion to approve Resolution 2209, amending the Holden Beach fee schedule for the curbside recycling.
Second.
Second.
All right. Ryan, second. Discussion, anyone?
Heather, is this just the, the amount that the individual person pays for the recycling?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's what, that's what I thought.
Yep.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Unanimous, Madam Clerk, passes. All right. We read for public comment. Does anyone in this large audience want to have anything to say about anything that you want to talk about? If you would raise your hand and be recognized, you can come to the podium. Anyone? Going once, tries, three times. We're going to number 23. Mr. Hewitt, town manager, report.
Yes, sir. We're still awaiting the final federal inspection on the FEMA project, FEMA beach project. We've been requested to supply some additional specific details by the FEMA EHP office, Environmental Historic Preservation Office. In case folks don't know, we're still short about $600,000 in reimbursement. This deep dive request for the detailed information is going to require ATM to provide us with some assistance in order to answer the mail. We anticipate those responding back to FEMA within the next two weeks, and after that, we still don't know what type of feedback we'll get to our responses, or what the final timeline is on, one, the 600, receiving the $600,000 in remaining reimbursements, or just what that will mean for the total program. Ocean Boulevard resurfacing bike path status, this is not good news. Conversation with the acting division engineer, Caitlin Marks, says that only one bid came in on the project, which was 40% above the NCDOT's engineers estimate. That bid came in above $5 million, which automatically sends it to the central office in Raleigh. It's been rejected. They will resolicet to have two timeframes, one with a before Memorial Day, the same specification, Memorial Day of '23, and another with an alternative timeframe, an alternate bid, between mid-September '23 and Memorial Day of '24. The paraphrased quote from Caitlin is that they are, it is not likely that there'll be a responsive bid presented as the first option. The alternative is more realistic. That would be pushing the. That would be pushing the project off for a year. Uh, 796-
Before we leave that, if I can interrupt you, this, this really is so embarrassing. I think this four years in a row, I promised the public that the bike path was coming, and now a liar again. And, I mean, as late as the Holden Beach POA meeting, I think Pat, didn't I say that it was gonna be in place and everything was on go? And, uh, this came as an unbelievable shock. And not only to me, but I think to our, uh, DOT people of this area. Uh, everyone was excited about it. And the bad news is, as I said a minute ago, everything just keeps going up. I, I don't know where, where things are gonna end. But I just apologized to everybody. I was telling everybody in good faith that it was gonna be done. 30 days ago, I was promising that. Anyway, sorry to interrupt.
796, I believe there was mention that, um, David Woods is, uh, working on the preparation of renderings for the board's consideration. He'd met the last week with Christie and Tim to begin that process, and we're anticipating, uh, some rough draft presentations or documents for you, uh, at the January board meeting. Uh, good news relating to the pier, uh, for the public's consumption, that the Kama Beach Access Grant for the Hatteras Ramp was approved recently in the total amount of, uh, just under $67,000, of which about $50,000 is state money. Uh, and this is for the Hatteras Ramp Handicap Access for the 50-foot lot adjacent and west of the pier that the town owns. Uh, for the board's purpose, this will require execution of a standard DCM contract by the board when we get it. Those normally take their time, matriculating down through the Division of Coastal Management, but that's a contract grant that you will have to, um, act on, uh, to acknowledge receipt of in order to execute. Uh, receiving, uh, working on executing administratively the Parks and Rec Trust Fund Grant, that half a million dollars received, uh, or approved earlier in the year. There's an administrative requirement to get a second appraisal. That's currently underway, and we are anticipating, uh, the first week of February completion date on that, at which point we can go ahead and submit all our stuff to Part of to receive those funds. Uh, as a reminder, uh, this Friday, the 23rd of December, uh, we are expecting passage of the federal budget. Uh, there is a total of $3.8 million earmarked for Holden Beach, 2.7 of which is a, for the sewer lift station I mentioned earlier. There's $100,000 in there for stormwater and a million dollars in there for the Core on the Coastal Storm Damage Reduction Act. As a, um, as a reminder, also, uh, the General Assembly convenes the long session the second week of January, and we'll be communicating with our legislators to get some, uh, the town's priorities put forward. Uh, and lastly, Seagull Street, the Right Angle Engineer, our consulting, uh, firm has certified the co- final payout for the contractor, and we'll have the assessment resolution, uh, prepared for the board's, uh, consideration at the January meeting. And that's all I have.
Any questions from the commissioners?
Thank you, Ms. Zett. There is no way that, uh, you think or, uh, Caitlin thinks we can get this done this year? It's just really-
Well, and, and this is, uh, informal conversation, it since the responses to the formal bid was, there was one bidder, and it was 40% higher than anybody else. Um, it's just, it's, it's not realistic to expect that that's gonna happen. But they still have to put it out as far as the, um, state's contracting process. If the time was short eight weeks ago, it's actually gonna be shorter, and unless somebody just falls out of the sky, um, it's not rea- I don't think it's a realistic expectation to, to think that's gonna happen.
If you remember, we had an, a delay because of, uh, so many of the property owners inquiring us, maybe some negative comments and so forth about it, that delayed the, uh, offering for bids. And we all know what's happening. Every month that goes by, everything keeps going up and up and up. But anyway, it is what it is. Number 24, mayor's comments. Something has occurred that I think is a compliment for the town, but I know Mr. Hewitt and, and so forth that went to California to make a presentation about what we're doing on the oceanfront and got accolades for the town while, while he's at that California event. But, uh, in the last few days, the Great Lakes have con- uh, town up there has contacted me on behalf of the town of Holden Beach, some things that we're doing here, and I'll be getting with the staff, uh, to react to that. But it's just amazing how word gets out across the country about a little place called Holden Beach. And, uh, for all the work that all of you do, whatever your part may be, I really appreciate that. And, um, and there are some good things that the country is recognizing us for. The Christmas decorations in the town, I've gotten several phone calls and little notes and emails about how pretty the town is, and it is nice looking and, uh, Christmasy when you ride down the beach. And we've had some homes that are really decorated a great deal and mighty bright. So, um-
It's not turtle season.
Uh, and trying to be brief, uh, just remind everybody about the docks and the walkways, the showers outside. Those pipes are gonna freeze and burst, so if you haven't taken care of it, call a neighbor, a friend, or do it yourself, whatever you need to do. But it's gonna be a, a tough few days coming up, and I've got friends up in Boone that say it's gonna be below zero for at least two days in a row up there, uh, this week. So it's gonna be winter time. All snow skiers head to the mountains. That's what I got to say. Mr. Smith, what do you have?
Well, again, I, I think, Alan, as you said, it's, it's been a really good year for, for Holden Beach. We've done a lot of great things so far this year, and I'm looking forward to, uh, working with, uh, my fellow commissioners and you and our town staff to continue these projects. I wanna thank the firms that came in tonight to discuss, uh, the Block Q and the pier project. Uh, I think as we move forward, they are getting a better understanding of what we, we have envisioned. And again, those two proj- projects are near and dear to my heart and, uh, and my fellow commissioners as well. I wanna thank our Public Works Department. Those guys are just endless. They, uh, they go above and beyond the call of duty, uh, for a lot of people here on the island and, and for, uh, and for the town of Holden Beach. Uh, I also wanna thank the rest of our town's staff for their diligence. I mean, we do a whole lot with just a few people, and they really, uh, I really am proud of, uh, the work they've done for us this year. Uh, wanna thank all the people that came out tonight. I wanna thank all the people that have participated in our board of commissioner meetings all year long, some more than, than others, and the ones online that keep up with what we're doing. That's important to, uh, to me to make sure that the public is aware of what's going on here at the board of commissioners, uh, when we have our meetings. I'm grateful to have Gerald back on board now as, uh, and we have a full committee now. And I just wanna, uh, hope everyone has a safe and happy Christmas and New Years, and we'll hit the ground running again in 2023.
Mr. Murdock?
I also wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight, and, um, as always, we really appreciate the work the town staff does for us on a daily basis. Appreciate the engineers and, um, the ones that are working on these important projects, coming out and, and giving your time tonight and giving the presentations, very informative. I hope we can keep that up. I know the public really wants to, uh, keep abreast of that kinda stuff. Um, it's a time of year, like we were talking about when we came in, I'm wide open 360 days a year, but the brakes seem to get pumped a little bit at Christmas. And I wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and I want you to really reflect on what is important, and that's your families and, and the, the people around you and your friends and the, just the absolutely the things that you can't replace and that could be taken away from you at any moment. And some of those were this year, um, for me, anyway. And, um, you can't get those back. And no matter what goes on in the town or who's mad at who or who's doing what, it needs to be a time to come together and just, just get along and be thankful that we're here for one and, and that we, we do have things that we should be appreciative of that we take for granted day in and day out. And, and we ought to hold them, hold things really special and dear inside of your person, um, and pass it along to everybody that you can. Because there's a lot more positives in life than there is negatives, and we all agree as adults and kids and everybody to disagree at times. We're never all gonna think the same. We're not gonna vote for the same people. Um, and things aren't always gonna work out like we want them to. Another thing that worries me, and I'm gonna touch on it a little bit, I can't drive two miles, four miles, six miles, eight miles in any direction from this town that we live in. It used to be small, that there's not acres of land being pushed down and things getting built, and the infrastructure's gonna fall behind, and I just don't know how the area's gonna sustain it. But I'm proud of you commissioners, at least having the forethought to consider Holden Beach that we may be able to handle at least a portion of that by thinking ahead. And it's another reason I feel like we need to move these projects ahead as, as quick as we can, because apparently there's gonna be some massive growth in this area, and, uh, it, it's coming, and, and I, I don't think there's anything we can do to stop it. But just be wary, I mean, the joy of hardies is gonna be up at the end of the street, you know? You know, just have a Merry Christmas, that's all. Just, just, just have a good holiday season.
Doctor?
Um, I wanna, uh, repeat what, uh, fellow commissioners said. We have a great staff here. They do, like Rick said, we have a few people that do the work of several people, and I think it was a good year, and they've worked hard, and we're very appreciative of everything they do. Um, we've had a busy year, uh, some growing pains, acquiring some property, uh, was a touchy subject, uh, in multiple situations, but I think the purchases we made, um, are positive, and I'm excited about the next year and the projects, and thankful for the engineers that came in, and I'm excited about, we've got some drawings going, we're seeing some, some progress. Um, I do wanna thank the Merchants Association again. I've run into a couple officers several weeks, and it looks awesome to see those cameras there. Um, I think that's gonna help keep our officers safe, and I'm really appreciative, again, of the association for getting those for you guys. I think that's a big, big project for them, and it's much needed. I just wanna wish everybody safe holidays, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year, and everybody stay safe, and we'll see you next year.
Ms. Pat?
I'm gonna repeat what everybody else is saying, that it's really nice to see progress being made on some of our big projects. I, I think ending the year with two engineering firms coming and giving us drawings of what things may look like is, is really encouraging. It ends the year on a really good note, um, and I'm looking forward to the January meeting because I think we're discussing absolutely everything at that meeting, so we'll have a good start to the year. Merry Christmas to the staff, to the town. Take care of yourselves and see you in January.
Judge? Just to say that, uh, I am honored and privileged to be among this distinguished group. I appreciate the comments that I have heard tonight. I think about the unique issues that this, these career people face, this board faces here, and the progress that has been made, and it makes you very thankful. It's proud to be a part of. Merry Christmas.
Thanks, sir. Madam Clerk? Number 26, closed session.
Closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 14331811A3, consult with the attorney in North Carolina General Statute 14331811A6 personnel.
Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Motion. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous? Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here. Merry Christmas to each and every one of you. We're back in regular session.
I'd like to make a motion, we adjourn. Sir?
All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Unanimous?